This is a special meeting on March fifteenth at four o'clock at the courthouse. And we have lots of folks that are on the Zoom link on this. And perhaps we go around and make a quick introduction. Why don't we start off with the, the county commission? Then we will move over to the folks with Blue Water and West Virginia Housing. And then fill in with those folks that are perhaps not affiliated with anything. So Alison, you want to start off just a real quick introduction to everyone?
I want to call the county commission meeting back to order.
Okay, that's all we needed to do for that. So I'm Alison Taylor. I'm one of the county commissioners here in Fayette.
Tom Luiz is county commissioner in Fayette.
John Brenneman, county commissioner.
Attorney counsel, prosecuting attorney, counsel for the county commission.
And then we have Brad Wolf.
Brad Wolf, property owner in Free Park.
Will Horn, member of the U R A.
I'm Jenna Grayson, I'm a member of the U R A.
B V, to remember the U R A.
Matt Wender, member of U R A.
And Jeff Proctor, chairman of the U R A.
Tom Luiz is a member of the U R A.
Well, we have a number of people on, on Zoom. Everybody on Zoom can see them. We've got Allison Abara, she's a business, local business owner. Emily DiMarco, do we know who Emily is?
Well, maybe, I mean, Blue Water, do you, Blue Water team, do you want to go ahead and introduce yourself?
Yeah. Sure, you're welcome. I'm Emily DiMarco, I'm with Blue Water Development.
I'm Jessica Lewis.
I'm with Blue Water Development also.
And Jessica Lewis at Blue Water also.
My name's George Cunningham, I'm with Giff Hart and Smith, we're counsel for Blue Water Development.
My name, my name is Josh Gerald, I'm an attorney with Spillman, Thomas &amp; Battle, and we're local counsel to Blue Water Development.
Oak Hill, do you want to go ahead and introduce yourself?
I'm Demeta Johnson, I'm the city manager for Oak Hill.
I'm the G coordinator for the city of Oak Hill.
I'm Allison Abara, I'm the director of economic development for the city of Oak Hill. Yeah, surprise.
All right, I think we have everyone though. Gina Belcher, you're, do you have, are in, is there anyone else on your team here?
Yeah, Jenna Belcher, and I have Andy Davis and Allison Smith with me as well.
This is a large contingency here. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank, or actually Erica, why don't you introduce yourself? And I think you have one staff also.
I do, yes, this is Erica Bogus, I'm the executive director at the West Virginia Housing Development Fund. And we also have our staff counsel, Kristen Schaefer here today too.
Great, thank you.
And I'm sorry, I didn't catch Gina Belcher, what group are you with?
Executive Director of the New River Gorge Regional Development Authority.
Got it, thank you so much.
All right, well, we've called the meeting. There has been a request by Blue Water to amend the purchase agreement for three sixty day extensions for further due diligence. You know, I'd like, first I'd like to say that in a slightly apologetic fashion, that as the chair for the last two and a half or three years, and on the, on the U R A for, since nineteen, since two thousand and five or six somewhere, I wish I could say that the record keeping was in better shape. And the, the folks from Blue Water have requested several different things from the U R A. I've tried my best to find whatever I can. I've spent many, several hours filing through the files that are at the courthouse and my old records that were provided during the meetings that I had attended. And, and as I said, I tried to do the best. There are several pieces of information which I was not able to get. For instance, the phase one study. And there are other small things that have not been taken care of. And so consequently, this has left them at a slight disadvantage of being able to acquire a lot of the information that they needed rapidly. So now they are kind of having to, through their own effort, go and backfill on some of this information along with the fact that nine hundred acres is a big piece of property to inspect, to survey, and to really get a feel for it. Perhaps in the first rendition, it might have been possibly a better idea to have asked for a longer period of due diligence, but it, you know, it is what it is. And no one, I don't think some of us perceived the fact that it was going to take as long as it has. And with that, they have asked for an amendment to the agreement for three extensions of sixty, up to three, in, of up to sixty days of each of those three extensions. And so I have circulated the information to the U R A members and would like to open it up to the members for discussion and possibly any questions that they may have of the folks that are on the call.
Jeff, if I may, this is George Cunningham again, I'm counsel for Blue Water. As one clarifying point, the amendment to the P S A would evidences three extensions, but would in effect add two extensions with one of the extensions already had, already having been exercised. We are currently in an extension period that was present in the original P S A. The amendment would simply add two additional sixty day periods to the existing sixty day extension.
George, thanks for clarifying that for me.
They've already exercised the first.
Well, this is Will Horn, a member of, I'm waiting to draw the extension. The amount of money being put down each time, and we understand that that money will go to the purchase. But my concern with the board, if we go to the full extent of the extension and the sale falls through, we will have a very large legal bill because the only ones that are making money here in all this are the lawyers. And we will be left holding a large legal bill with fifteen thousand dollars in deposit money. So that's my concern with the extension right now. Any other thoughts pertaining along those lines?
I got some thoughts, but I was going to let all the other members speak before I spoke.
I, I agree with Will, I think it's a little bit, I feel like Blue Water should have a little bit more skin in the game. And I also have additional thoughts and concerns. But I think, you know, fifteen thousand dollars doesn't seem fair for our team to have to, like Will said, put these legal bills should something fall through. And so I, I agree, Will, I, I, I'm concerned by that. In addition, Will.
Well, who's going to be answering the questions for Blue Water? What lawyer is going to answer the questions that I'm going to ask?
Well, this is Emily.
Usually a lawyer answers these questions.
Well, it just depends, I'm, I'm here and Carl is here, so.
Did the lawyer respond to these, the reason why they're doing this extension?
A lawyer did respond to that particular question.
Which lawyer responded to this?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, yes.
I'm trying to figure out which lawyer answered this, because I'd rather this, the lawyer that answered this, the one I would be, I would want to speak to.
Well, I think George, who responded, but he's representing.
He's representing Blue Water, so if there's a legal question, George, George can answer.
Down here, when you answered, one of the reasons didn't have information, and one of the, one of the reasons is financial records. They didn't get financial records for due diligence.
Sorry, I, I don't know if anybody had it, had any problems. I, I had an issue with the, the connection of hearing exactly what was said there. It, it got, it got kind of sketchy, I apologize if you can repeat.
Yeah.
Says that, said you didn't receive a very little information to do your due diligence. And one of the issues was you said you didn't receive any financial records. What does financial records have to do with due diligence?
Would you like me to take that, George?
Yeah, that's more of a, more of an operations and business question on, on underwriting.
Is that okay if I answer that question, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, this is Emily. So as part of our due diligence process, one of the, one of the many pieces of information that we typically request of our sellers is information about the property. So any kind of financial records that they have on the property is one piece of due diligence. So any kind of.
About liens or loans?
Yep, any, anything that is available. And as Jeff stated earlier, you know, we had worked early on in the beginning and I had requested, I had submitted a pretty detailed list of information that I had requested that's part of our quote unquote due diligence checklist that we have for many of our acquisition properties. And rightfully so, it's an undeveloped piece of land. And I think there was some information potentially that might not be available. But, you know, we just, as he stated, there, there was very, to know, very little information that was available that we typically use to kind of do our analysis about a piece of property. So, you know, was there any kind of revenue? Was there any kind of, you know, what was available on, on the piece of property? You know, how much revenue was available? How much did things cost like over the years that the U R A had, had had the property? What was kind of expenses on the property? Any kind of financial record keeping on the property? And there, there was none to help us inform any of that information. So there was, there was that, there was no survey. You know, we had to do our own research on, you know, as far as the parcels. We had received some information on the parcels, but we, we don't even have the, the property, a property survey. So we don't even know where the property lines are. So we.
Usually when you buy a piece of property, you do a survey before you purchase it, correct?
Yeah, yeah, and that's, yeah, and that is in our property.
Say is, I'm not trying to, I'm just, you know, I bought property and sold property. I've put money down on property, I've done due diligence on property, not a million, not a million two, of course. A whole lot smaller than that, but it's the same, same, same process.
Yeah.
The first thing I do even before I buy a piece of property is I, is I look at the piece of property. If I think I can do a survey, I get a survey done, I sign an agreement with, with, for sixty or ninety days, and I do the survey. I mean, to me, you, a hundred and eighty days, there's not even been a move on trying to get a survey done on a piece of property.
We, we have, we have made a move, we've engaged with it. We have engaged, we have engaged with an engineer and we have done different types of survey. Please keep in mind, this is a nine hundred acre piece of property. So there's a lot of undeveloped land as part of this survey. And, you know, so we were trying to identify which part of this land we could develop. So there's different types, there's the topo, there's an altar, there's a boundary. So there's lots of different types of surveys. So we have done a survey so that we could figure out from a concept standpoint, where can we develop the land so that we could figure out utilities? There's a lot of different complex decisions that go into determining what components are developed so that we can figure out, you know, what, all the pieces of, of the puzzle, if you will. So we have made a lot of strides. We've gotten, we have completed a phase one, we've spent a lot of time and money already. So we have completed our phase one, we have completed a partial survey, we have completed a title commitment, and we have identified as part of our title commitment that there is a cloud on, a cloud on the title that the U R A must resolve as it relates to the rofer, which is part of the reason why we have requested an extension. So I don't know if, if the U R A has explained that to you.
Well, you, you talked about the R O F R.
Mm-hmm, the rofer, yeah.
Okay, well, I, my opinion on it, have you, have you looked at the rofer? Is that what you called it? Yeah.
Right, the first refusal.
Have you had legal counsel to look at it?
Emily, I, I can handle this one. So by, by way of a little bit of background, the, the property at issue here was subject to a right of first refusal, right of first offer. That agreement essentially gave two individuals that are, that my understanding was, are local individuals the right to purchase a portion of the subject property. And that right was, presents itself as soon as the U R A has an offer from a third party. By rights, our, our P S A recognizes the rofer. And as a condition to closing, the U R A was obligated pursuant to the terms of the rofer to present our P S A to those individuals and give them a thirty day period opportunity to purchase the portion of the real property subject to the terms of the purchase agreement. Now, to my understanding, Jeff Proctor has provided our purchase agreement to those two individuals. They acknowledged receipt of the purchase agreement and the thirty days that they have by right under the rofer have since expired with the rover holders being the individuals that have that right, not having exercised their option to purchase the piece of property that the rofer speaks to.
Well, that's why, I mean, that's why I'm, I already knew that, I knew that before you did. I mean, it's a long time ago. But what I'm saying is, why is it in there is the reason you want the extension? It's done and over with, correct?
Well, so, so the issue becomes, we have a title commitment that, that protects our right to title on the property. And as is typical, there are certain exceptions to title that our title company will not insure over. One of those issues and one of those exceptions that is currently on our title commitment is the unrecorded rofer. And in speaking with our title company, the issue is there is no resolution or release of the rofer as of yet. The rofer, one of the terms of the rofer is that if the rofer holders elect not to exercise their right to purchase, they are obligated under the rofer to execute a release of their rights. They have ignored, to my understanding, all of the U R A's attempts to have that release executed. And as such, there is no formal release of the rofer in place.
Okay, so when they, when they don't do it, with it, because I don't believe they're going to do it. So if, if they don't give you written notice to file or however how the process is, where does it go from there?
So those are, there are a couple of options that we are pursuing. Frankly, it is an obligation on the U R A to clear that cloud of title. The, the terms of the purchase agreement make it clear that, that the U R A is able to transfer title to the property free and clear of any encumbrances. That is an encumbrance that we are not willing to purchase the property as an exception. And so we have spoken with our title company and they have presented a couple of different options as potential avenues. One at which is probably the most costly and inconvenient would be to, to have the U R A file a suit seeking a declaratory judgment on the rights of the rover holders as being extinguished. Again, that would be timely and costly. The, an alternative that our title company has raised as a possibility would be the U R A executing an indemnification agreement, indemnifying our title company in the event that after closing, there was a title claim by the rover holders that they have rights under the rofer. Again, I don't think they have any rights, considering they've been presented with the P S A. But that is not something that Blue Water feels that it should be obligated to assume. And certainly, our title company is not going to take the risk that the, the rover holders will come back and, you know, pursue a, pursue a claim on the property absent some sort of protection from the U R A.
Who's the title, who's, who's the title company?
Steptoe &amp; Johnson is a, a local firm, they are the ones that are providing title. Bear with me one second as to the actual title company that's underwriting the commitment. I apologize, bear with me one second.
Take your time, we've got all evening.
It would be Stewart Title, which is a, a national title company, is the title company underwriting with our counsel, our, our title company being Steptoe &amp; Johnson.
So, so I have a question, and, and it's not in relation to the title. So are we, I, that, that's reasonable to me, I think that sounds reasonable, sort of, mostly. But, and so my question, I think, what? Tom, did you have other questions about the title?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so, in the same, in the same section, you know, we, we pose these questions and, and George, you responded. I will say, some of the questions didn't get the best answer. And so my concern is we're seeing very little in the way of environmental reports, no existing surveys. And my question to you all, and it's my assumption you've hired C E C for your engineering, is that correct?
We have, yes, we're partnering with him right now.
Okay, okay, so, and, and are you aware of the fact that C E C, that the U R A utilized this, utilized C E C before this purchase?
I don't know if I knew that exactly, but I know C E C has done a lot of work in West Virginia, so, I mean, it's surprising.
Yeah, they've also done work on, on Wolf Creek Park. And so it's a little bit concerning, yeah, it's a little bit concerning to me that you were unable to find some of these things or that these things didn't exist, or even a survey. But in addition to that, my.
They did not, yeah, go ahead. I mean, I, I was able to use what they had previously, but they did not ever have a, a survey that we needed. But we were able to leverage information that they, that they did have. And please know, we love this project. I, I, I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't want to feel defensive or I don't, I just, I, I want to answer any and all of your questions, but I wasn't able to, like, state upfront, like, we love Wolf Creek, we think there's great potential. We've been working really hard over these last couple of months and we haven't hidden anything. No one's asked us, if you want to see our phase one, I mean, we don't typically share that during the due diligence period. No one's asked me for it, but if you want to see it, I don't, I don't think there's a problem sharing it. But I'm not hiding anything, we don't typically share that.
No, and I don't, I don't think, that's not, that's actually not what I'm thinking.
Okay, okay.
When did you get phase one completed? I've got another question to the lawyer, but I'm sorry, go ahead.
Wait, one second.
Go ahead, no problem, go ahead, I just.
That's not, yeah, that's not actually what I'm getting at, but so what I'm getting at is, is my, my biggest concern right now. And I think the, the pivotal point for this project actually is, is Oak Hill, at this time, their water main, their sewer main doesn't, won't be able to serve a project of this size for a significant amount of time. And so my question to you, I guess, is one, when you're planning on opening, when do you see the, the phase one of this project being completed and, and opening the doors?
We, we haven't determined that, so I know there has been some conversation. So I think when we started this, we had an initial concept, like, a, a couple of years ago or a year and a half ago, whenever that was, for a much smaller campground, that was before we had any due diligence, before we were under, even under contract. And then we did have, we, as I shared earlier, we did have a, a LIDAR survey done where we were able to look at the topo and look at some, where, where we actually could do some more development. And we have worked on a very rough concept so that we could take a look and figure out, okay, what, what is the potential of this property so that we could start to have those conversations with the city of Oak Hill? And I know that, you know, we have engaged Jim and Jim has had some initial conversations with the city of Oak Hill. And he did share with me last week, unfortunately, he is, I think is out of town on family vacation or, or work trip or something, but he wasn't able to join us today. But he has had some conversations and he has shared with me that there were some initial conversations about that there was capacity. And then I think he got some different information and that maybe there wasn't capacity. And so I think there was a meeting last week and maybe shared a very initial concept that, you know, that said, you know, we're looking at, at a, a overall concept and we're looking at phasing it. None of, none of those decisions have been finalized, we're thinking about, you know, this plan, what is it that you can do? And, and one of the reasons why we liked the TIF so much was that that was an important tool that if the city of Oak Hill can't support us, what, you know, how much capacity can they support at what number? And then we would need to work together as a, as a team, as a partner, like we have done in other communities to figure out, okay, what can you support? And then where can we get the funds? You know, what, what can Blue Water do to help supplement? Or what are there other additional tools available like the TIF that we can use from a development standpoint that could help supplement?
So I think, but I think, so what you're saying is you don't have a projected open date.
We don't, we don't have a projected open date. Yes, I understand that.
Twenty twenty-five.
I understand that.
Yeah, and so the concern is that, right now, Oak Hill is in a position where they're being pressured. And to be totally honest, Jim Christie was aware of this request and it tried to put pressure on Oak Hill to make a commitment by the deadline for the current extension. And so you can understand why this is a little bit frustrating from the, my perspective as someone who works in the regional, a regional organization, because it feels as though one of our communities is being targeted. And so in addition to that, I feel like it's important to recognize that that infrastructure, in order to get it updated, in order to write for funding, in order to put it basically in a long list of, of, of other upgrades that we need to do throughout accounting, it's going to take three to four years to get that, to get that in the ground. And so my question to you all is, is three to four years a realistic timeline for you? And I don't know.
I don't know either, yeah. And I, and again, I, I was under, you know, I think we were all under the assumption that, you know, if twenty twenty-five, you know, if we could do something, what could we do? I don't, you know, I don't, I wasn't in the room with Jim Christie, so I can't speak on his behalf. But if we could do something, you know, we, we assumed that we would close on the property, you know, this year in twenty twenty-three. And, you know, that if we could start construction in twenty twenty-five, you know, what could, what could we do together to, to work on that project? And, and what could be available? And, and we knew that.
Yeah.
I think we were just trying to. I think we were just trying to figure out what would be our options. Again, I don't know how it was presented. I, I wasn't in the rooms. I can't speak.
Well, and it would, you know, it, it's, it's my understanding that, that Oak Hill was contacted about this project just two weeks ago. And so up until that point, there hasn't been any communication around the capacity um or the availability, what the, you know, what the, whether they're willing to do it. Um and so that's concerning to me when we're asking for this extension because are we gonna turn around in a hundred and twenty days and, and do it again? Um because it just at this point, it's, it's taken too long. Um and so.
Understood. That was not my understanding because we've been working on this for, for longer than two weeks. So again, I, I apologize because Jim is, you know, partner on our team and, and we have been working on this for a while. Again, I, I cannot speak on his behalf, but you have our commitment now. You know, we will work together. We are committed to, to Wolf Creek if we can get through, you know, some of these obstacles. Um you know, as Jeff, as Jeff said.
Who is the thing with uh C E C? When did you uh?
We, we engaged, we, we've been engaged with this even, even before we signed the contract, but we've been engaged with Jim since we've signed this, the, the I mean, we, we started talking, we started, we started talking about this project um the last couple of months since we've engaged. Again.
See, I, I think what they're saying, the issue is Jim knew the capacity before you signed the agreement. You hired C E C Jim. And Jim did not do anything for a hundred day. I think sewer and water is pretty important in a project.
Uh we agree as well.
Besides the survey, I think that's probably the most important thing is
And we agree.
Watered sewer and nobody or a hundred and eighty days done anything to find out it, but Jim knew. Jim knew the capacity. He knew way before. He said it right in commission meeting. We've told him. N R G D R D A's told him and a hundred and eighty days went by and then you contact Oak Hill. I think that's the issue she's talking about. That should, that should have been done the first month of, of finding out, does it even have a, a sewer and water capacity?
No, of course. It, it absolutely, that's a big part of our due diligence. That's, that's.
Okay, well, that word. I, I would like to, I'd like to jump in here for a second. We've gone on for a half hour. And I think that uh it's, it's uh apparent that there, there are uh questions and perhaps some frustration maybe on the communication, perhaps on the perception of the speed of the progress that Blue Water has made. But we can sit here and, and uh for another three hours and ask all the questions. But I think as, you know, Fayette County has been, and the U R A has been working for quite a long time to get this property developed. And you know, uh Oak Hill had always uh at least in my perception as a, as a member, had uh had uh stated that they thought that there was plenty of capacity and things change uh a- as areas grow and regions change and, and whatnot and so forth. So clearly, you know, we're, we're arguing about their speed and the steps and the communication. But that certainly is not uh gonna get us any closer to trying to bring uh Blue Water into the community as a partner to try to turn this into a uh a, a positive asset for, for Fayette County. And so I would like, I would like to uh spend a few more minutes uh on, on questions. But the reality of it is, is they're asking for an extension for due diligence. And so we have a choice of either not, not uh approving that, letting the purchase contract go and the property going back to uh West Virginia housing. Or we can sit here and become uh uh extended and continue to work with them and engage with them. I, I, hey, anyone in the, Tom, anyone in the group that wants to jump in and help? I mean, it's been a one man show for two and a half years. So I'd, I'd, I'd appreciate it. Anyone that wants to help us move this project forward.
Okay, I got one more question for the lawyer, Jeff, if you don't mind.
I don't mind.
And then um I think what I'd like to ask is if they're willing to negotiate the ame- uh the amendment after the question, the lawyer. Lawyer back on there?
Yes, yep, he's here.
Yeah, when did y'all, let me see, when did y'all decide to uh identification agreement? Then, then the
Indemnification.
Yeah, agreement. When did y'all, when did you ask for it?
Uh that, that was raised as a, a potential uh resolution from our title company. Um I, I think about two weeks ago, Corey Bonasso is, is on here. Uh I communicated that to him. Corey, if you could give any, any feedback. Is, is that correct about two weeks ago?
Sure. Yeah, it was.
Raised as a potential resolution?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I think when we first communicated about it was either early last week or end of two weeks ago. But um yeah, that was, that wasn't a formal request. That was just a list, one of, one option in the list of many of uh potential resolutions we could have on, on the rover. And I've been in communications with uh with Jeff and we are uh exploring some other options to get that rofer exception removed from the title and um and George is in communication with the title company to see what might be acceptable to them. Um and so that's just something, you know, we're working towards the resolution, but um just, just taking some time because um the rofer holders refused to sign it. So that's creating a bit of a, an issue. Um so we're looking for workarounds. Uh you, you folks know the rofer holders. And so I don't know if it's much of a surprise that they didn't sign the release. Um but that's sort of where we stand now.
Since we're on a lawyer question, I'm gonna throw in here. But Corey, why, why aren't we just executing an indemnification agreement? I mean, what, what's the problem with it? Because we know that the right of first refusal has expired. Why are we horsing around and not just executing it?
Well, that, again, that was only raised a couple of weeks ago, and I wanted to bring that to the attention of the authority as a potential option. Um but to this point, there hasn't been a whole lot of opportunity to discuss that option yet. So that may be the best course, the best resolution for it. And if the authority and ultimately the county commission agree, that's the best course of action. And that's exactly what we'll do. Um but we just haven't had enough time to.
It's my understanding that right of first refusal wasn't even recorded. So that's, that's another weakness in, in it. Um but you know, it just seems like some of these things are non-issue issues from a legal perspective.
No, I, I agree. And I think I would agree with you that the rofer by its terms is done and it wasn't recorded. So it doesn't, it very, uh not very likely that it would, you know, present many issues if it were taken to a court, but that we want to prepare ourselves, uh you know, speaking from the authority's perspective as best as possible to protect the authority and Blue Water and, and come up with the best resolution for everyone. Um but that's, again, those are the options on the table that the authority just hasn't had opportunity to discuss yet.
And I would love to put that on an agenda and uh go into executive session and cover that further at some point.
Well, go ahead, Gina.
Okay, yeah. So and I think, you know, Jeff mentioned that it appeared as though the questions that I was presenting are about timeline. And you know, how are we, why do you want this kind of approach? But actually, what I'm, what I'm really getting at is it's really difficult to, to, to approve this in my, for me, knowing that you don't know what what your job creation is, what your, you know, your timeline is for, for investment and for, for, you know, first phase, second phase, whatever they may be. It's really difficult for me personally to say, yes, go forward with this because we, we, we could get through all of this. And like, like Will said in the beginning, we could be left with a lawyer bill and that's it. And so um for me, it would be really helpful um to know um what your job creation is. Um and then also, what is your timeline? Because if it doesn't work with, with the mainline upgrades um necessary from Oak Hill, then this doesn't, it's a moot point. We don't need to do this, right? Because it just doesn't make any sense. And so that's what's frustrating for me um about all of this. Is that, is that we have had very little information about how this will move forward. Um in addition to that, and, and on the job creation um topic, I, I just need to know, like, I know that, you know, there's been mention of applying for public funding for um infrastructure. And if, if Blue Water is not able to receive public funding for infrastructure, will you move forward with this, with this project?
So uh again, this is, this is the lawyer. Uh uh I, I'll let Emily handle uh maybe more of the operations questions and some of the the uh answers regarding job creation and things like that. Those are typically uh done on underwriting and our operations team on how we build this. Uh to be frank, Blue Water is a business. They, we, they are not a nonprofit. They are not a charity. This has to make money for Blue Water. And so that all has to be considered when investing in a property. Um and to your point about, about being left with a legal bill, um I, I will be the first to admit that lawyers are not cheap. And me sitting here talking uh each minute costs Blue Water money. Each step in due diligence that Blue Water takes from a phase one to a survey costs them tens of thousands of dollars that they are willing to eat right off the bat in signing this agreement, knowing full well that it may not work out. That's not to say this property is not, but they invest in, in many different properties. And that is a cost of doing business that they are willing to assume right off the bat. And so it, to, to the point regarding, you know, leaving the, the, the U R A with a legal bill, it's not Blue Water's intention by any stretch of the imagination to come in and waste people's times, incur legal fees um or do anything of the sort and then leave people out to dry. It is simply uh uh we have to do our due diligence and, and do our underwriting such that it, the, the, the cost that we incur in investing in the property is ultimately profitable on the backend. So Emily, I, I'll, I'll defer to you on that.
That's fine. And that, and the employees.
Yeah, go ahead.
No problem. So um uh I was just looking back. So um I'll just give you on average, a property of this size, let's just say a proposed site count for this is five hundred. I would say on average, um you know, we're looking at anywhere between sixty and eighty. So if we ramp up in the middle of July, we're looking at uh ninety full-time employees, right? So that would be at peak, right? So anywhere between May, you're looking at fifty, you ramp up at June seventy-five, July eighty, eighty-five. Um so, you know, and then we, we have full-time year-round that manage and staff the park anywhere between, you know, six, I'll just say anywhere between six to twelve. I, I don't hold me to that, but I'm just saying on average, it just depends on the amenities that we have and the, the site count that's there. This is just on a proposed site count of fifty. So that's what you're looking at peak, at the peak on average. So if you look at.
Hey, Em- Em- Emily, yeah, this is, this is Carl. Just, just to clarify that, that, that those numbers are equivalent um full-time employment. So it includes hard-time employees too, but hard-time that adds up to a, a full-time equivalent. You're welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for clarifying.
Uh Matt, do you have any, any uh questions for the group?
Yeah, I, I've got a question, not a question so much as a comment, uh and perhaps not so much as an observation. Uh in, in listening to the conversation uh that we've been uh going through and reading the emails that were exchanged by the uh U R A members and a few others prior to the call. I think the concern has to do with um our belief in the uh undermining perhaps of the sincerity of the purchaser to go through with the purchase of the property. Given the amount of time that has passed and what would appear to be uh not a lot of work. And maybe there's good reason for that. I don't want to argue about, you know, the time that Blue Water and their various partners have spent on this project. But to us, when we, when we started down this path, we assumed by, by the end of the first uh due diligence period, that this uh due diligence would be complete and we would be nearer a, you know, a purchase, purchase date. It now appears that we're a long way from that. And I think that in fairness to the U R A and others, uh there, there's a reason to, to feel perhaps that the uh the sincerity of this is, is maybe at question, a question in our mind. And that may be uh not fair to say uh if I were in the perspect, looking at this from the perspective of Blue Water. But that's not my perspective. So I think the solution here is the um fee and is the fee of consequence. And let me underline the word consequence to Blue Water. And I would say that any discussion of a five thousand dollar fee per extension is woefully, woefully inadequate.
I agree with you, Matt.
Um and, and Emily, can we, can we go back? So I, I asked, you know, if you guys, if you aren't able to receive public funding for infrastructure and, and moving this project forward, will Blue Water continue on the project?
I don't know how to, I, I don't know how to answer that. I mean, I don't, I don't.
But it's, can you answer this then? Emily, let me answer this. To me, out of all this conversation, there's one issue and one issue only, really. Your issue is sewer and water. That's the only thing left that you really need to tie down is sewer and water to make this, this uh project work. And you don't think you have it. Is that why this extension really is?
I mean, that's, that's one of the reasons. Yeah, we still have some titles, some outstanding title, but yeah.
Well, the title thing, I don't think, I don't think that.
We have, we have, we have.
I really don't think that's a big deal. I think.
No, we have some other. Yeah, no.
Well, I mean, that's the big issue.
Please, no, we haven't. We have done water.
So in, in the very beginning, yes. And, and I agree. Okay, I'll go ahead and just speak. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. It, it, it's okay. We, I just.
I mean, I think that's the big issue. And you're, you're looking for funding. When we was told that Blue Water had the funding for infrastructure.
We do have the funding for infrastructure, but we have to work, we have to work with the city of Oak Hill. We were told to Jeff's point, we were told that there was capacity. Now we're learning there's not. We, we need to figure this out together. So that's all we're asking. So as part of our due diligence, we're, as part of our due diligence, we're asking for an extension. That, that's all there is to it. That is all there is. So we would like the tip to stay. We're asking for the tip to stay in place. I, I, I never, that was, that was the one tool that I had understood was on this property. Uh I didn't.
For infrastructure?
Sure, yeah. It's, it's a tool that, that is available at a developer's disposal, is it not?
Well, do you have any, do you have any questions you need answered about the TIF? I mean, somebody said that somebody wanted to ask about the TIF and I'm ready to answer questions if I can.
I'd like to take that offline. I think that would be a good discussion offline.
So, okay, so as far, so I, I'm not sure. Are you all aware of, of, of Jim Christie and C E C approaching regional folks about um public infrastructure dollars for this project?
I don't, I'm not sure exactly what you mean.
That Jenna, Jenna Belcher, you're on here. Do you, can you, can you speak a little more to that meeting and what, what, what happened there?
Sure. Um I think the only other folks on this call that were there, uh Demita and Tyler were there from the city of Oak Hill. So I would ask that they ensure that they heard the same thing. Um yeah, we did have a conversation um this past week. Region for planning and development was on that call as well. And we were asked, would we um support Blue Water in moving forward public funding applications for infrastructure development? Um in which case, we indicated that there needed to be a much larger conversation that is happening now. Um ultimately, because we are sponsored entities of the county. Um but also um back to the point that, that we continue to make, the infrastructure upgrade associated with Oak Hill. Um and, and again, Demita and Tyler, please let me know if I'm speaking out of school here, is approximately a ten million dollar project on its own that has to be completed prior to your infrastructure being put in. I think it's important to note that that's a three to four-year project and could be pushed out longer if public funding was used. I think additionally, um Demita, there would have to be a modification to your D E P permitting. Um and a request of that modification with the D E P in order to perform that upgrade. So that could add an additional eight to twelve months. And all this would happen prior to your um, for infrastructure going in the ground. And so I just wanted to make sure that when we talk about that three to four-year timeline, that is prior to your infrastructure going in the ground.
Got it. Okay.
Sorry, to clarify, that's, that's. Sorry, to clarify, that's that's based on the 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 initial concept that was introduced, correct? With the
That that is, no, sir, that is based on, um, the phased approach of only the campsites. The homes are not even being included at this point, which I think is another very important thing to note. But, um, that was proposed as 400 to 650 campsites. It was indicated by Tyler and Demita with preliminary information that has been had. They could possibly serve 100 campsites without an upgrade, but that is not an affirmative number. So I think again, um, at this point, entry level into Wolf Creek Park would look like 100 campsites with three to four years to get to the 400 to 600 campsites.
So on that note, I I'm curious about the residential portion of this and if you've, if how that, what have you made any, like, I don't see, I asked, does Blue Water have a timeline for housing? And I just got no this time. And so does that mean it's scrapped? Is there no residential?
No, it's not scrapped. We just don't have a plan specific for that at this time. That doesn't mean that it's scrapped. Again, it's a, there's just a lot of components and elements. So we've just been kind of chunking it, if you will. And just right now, just looking at the campsites and what the capacity and what, you know, when you look at a development, you often look, when you look at any kind of home community, right? You look at a phased approach, a phasing approach, and that's what we're looking at right now. Um, but that doesn't mean that, you know, we won't look at a holistic uh, phasing approach. We just hadn't gotten to the housing component in in this particular time right now.
And what what's left? What what's left to do in the due diligence? I need y'all to tell the the board, if you don't mind, what is left to do in the due diligence for the for the extension?
I I think we clarified that a little earlier, but, uh, once again, we're we're looking to finalize our survey, uh, ensure that we have an adequate survey that will give the adequate endorsements that our financiers need and that our title, our title company needs. We need to eliminate clouds on title that are currently present from the rofer. I know that you, uh, may not think that is a as big of an issue. That is, to our minds, a glaringly large issue. We're talking about almost a third of the property uh, that's subject to this rofer. Now, is it enforceable? We're not sure. Uh, that that's an argument for a court to make. Uh, we're not going to to get involved in a property knowing that there is a potential for litigation that could be protracted for years on a third of the property that we are looking to develop. Um, not only that, uh, we we don't have and haven't been provided an adequate legal description that that classifies the property that we are purchasing. There's existing litigation on portions of the property that have been out conveyed. We need to confirm confirm that our meets and bounds descriptions adequately exclude those portions of the property that are that are subject to ongoing litigation, uh, as well as uh, a conveyance of the public road that the U R A had committed to. Um, again, this is not a a simple, you know, take a survey of a of a two-acre parcel and, you know, see if there's anything there.
Okay, I understand. I I agree. I agree with you. Let me ask you a question. Is the amendment negotiable? Well, I'll go ahead and throw it out since you can't answer.
I I didn't hear.
Well, I'm just wanting to see if the amendment is negotiable. I can't speak for the whole board, but I'm gonna speak for myself and see, see what comes of it. I would be willing, if it was just me, to do an amendment for 60 days for 10% of of the sell price that is put into an account, which that's a a hundred and $20,000 set in an account and give you 60 days to do your rest of your due diligence. If the property is not purchased, the money is goes to the U R A. If it's purchased, the $120,000 goes towards the purchase price. Now, I don't know how the others feel about that. 10% is not a bad, it bad deal either. Especially if you've had 100, already 180 days. And usually on a purchase, at least that I've been involved in, a much smaller scale, but still y'all guys have money or access to money. You buy a million dollars a piece of property. 10% is always put down. That's what I put down is 10%.
So respectfully, uh, Blue Water buys a lot of parcels, a lot of property. Uh, we would never agree. I don't think we've ever agreed to a 10% uh, deposit. That has never happened. Uh, at where I can't speak for the my, the principals at Blue Water and and what they're willing to commit to, but it that is not market and, uh, it's not something that I've I've ever experienced in my work for Blue Water. Uh, certainly a 10% deposit that would be fully non-refundable uh, is is a very large ask and is certainly not something that we typically do.
What's what's Blue Water's average due diligence period?
Um, usually between 90 and 120.
With within it with with sometimes with
Yeah, that that's typically with potential for extension options. Uh, we're usually talking 90 to 120 days on on existing campgrounds that, uh, are much smaller in, uh, span. Again, 900 acres is significantly larger than what we would typically, uh, purchase. Uh, usually they're in the the span of, uh, you know, anywhere as small as 10 acres up to 100 acres. 900 is significantly larger than is typical.
I'm sure you pay a lot more for that property too than what you're paying for this one.
So what about, I mean, I instead
Campgrounds are are more profitable than raw land. That is, that's definitely, that is definitely true.
I would like to, I'd like to suggest that, uh, you know, we've asked a lot of questions and I think that everyone's got a great understanding of what's going on here that with the due diligence, what's been done, what needs to be done. And, uh, uh, so the the really the question is, is moving forward with a a vote on this purchase agreement. I'd like to suggest we take a five-minute executive session. And I have no idea how to do it on Zoom.
Can I just ask, um, what about instead of instead of the purchase price, instead doing a thousand dollars a day? And so 60, 60 days, 120 days, just depending on how long you need, um, and we can do a thousand dollars a day.
So I I think you get to the same end result of $120,000 for a 120-day extension.
The due diligence happens faster.
I think Blue Water understands our need for
Well, we want to also be able to work with the city and come up with a real plan. So again, part, part of our extension request is to be able to work with the city on coming up with the plan so that if we can open in October in 2025 or shortly thereafter, I mean, we certainly don't want to sit on an empty piece of property. Our goal is to accelerate a campground opening. Rest assured that that would be our goal to
Yeah, I don't see that happening at all for us. I don't see 2025.
And that's fine, but I'm just saying we we don't see, you know, 15 years down the road. So we would want to try to accelerate something. So again, our our goal is you know, we we like to close properties as quickly as possible. Um, so this extension is not, is not because we've been sitting on our hands. Trust me, we've been working really hard to do everything possible. We've been working every day on this. Um, I hope, I hope you know that our intent, um, positive intent.
What do you have a, do you have a suggested, if 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 you're you're hearing what we're saying, do you have a a number that you would be comfortable with?
I think we have proposed it, but, um, you know, we can certainly
Right, but yeah, but you know, we're letting you know that that's a little bit lower.
To clarify, the the $5,000 ex- extension option, uh, deposit was and is present in the current PSA. And that was a negotiated that the U R A was comfortable with when we executed the agreement on the first extension being a $5,000 non-refundable deposit. All all this is doing
Extension, not for six months.
Well, it's five, so we're we're simply, our our amendment is simply extending that option to $5,000 per 60 days.
We're spending more lawyer fees in 60 days.
Yeah, now we're talking about a cumulative amount of time, not just 60 days.
I think it's important to recognize that not only is the attorney fee running up, uh, uh, the sum on Blue Water, it's running up to some on the U R A and the Fayette County Commission.
Jenna, can you, can you tell me, Jenna, Jenna Belcher, can you tell us what what is a typical fee for something like this in in commercial development?
I mean, I think it would just depend. Traditionally, the the property is is, you know, optioned at, we we recently did one that was optioned at $2,500 an acre with the opportunity to extend after the fact. I think the reality is, you know, it it is from a development perspective and and working with multiple companies in the region to locate, it it is somewhat surprising to me that there hasn't been, um, you know, sort of a rush on some of these pro forma figures to determine, um, you know, and and making diligence happen a little bit faster. We traditionally know within the first three months whether the property is going to work or not. I mean, again, and I hate to to beat a dead horse, but we have mentioned this since, you know, the last five years regarding this sewer. And so the fact that C E C just engaged the city two weeks ago on this, you know, it's 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 not going to fix itself in the next three to five years. And I and I think Demita made it pretty clear as well that the cost is going to have to be supported from the developer and it is approximately a $10 million project to upgrade. And so, you know, I I'm, I am just a little bit surprised from the engineering and diligence perspective, especially considering that C E C has been the engineer for, um, for the U R A and especially considering we have documentation of previous the work that had been done by Thrasher and others on that property when other companies have looked at it. I am a little bit shocked that that an extension is being asked at this point. It traditionally doesn't take this long to figure out that the property is usable or not.
Others, I want to step in and ask a question, but first of all, I mean, as already mentioned, this is a very large property. It's not a typical property. It's 900 acres. The surveying requirements are very extensive and and very expensive. Um, so it's not, it's it's not something that gets done overnight. It's not like, uh, like George said earlier. It's not like purchasing a couple acres. And furthermore, you know, there was no survey done originally.
Um, that we could use as a basis. Respectfully, going to interrupt, you're not the first ones to look at this property in the last 20 years. A lot of work has been done previously with other companies locating here. And so maybe that wasn't provided to you from the U R A, but you know, it it has existed prior.
So let me ask you a question about the sewer. So, you know, our understanding all along is that there has been more than substantial capacity. This isn't the first we've heard that there wasn't. And, you know, and to go back to when we originally started discussing this property, um, and and we we submitted an entire presentation, we actually came in person and and we presented to the U R A and the and the commission. Um, everybody was aware of the size and and the scope of development, both the campground property and the uh, residential portion, but nobody ever raised an issue about sewer capacity at that point in time.
See, you know where the information came from? Who told you that?
I think, yeah, I think
I mean, does nobody in the community understand what the, I mean,
Engineer, you got C E C. A C E C is your engineer and he knew way before you come along and that's who you should have relied on.
And we
We're relying on them. This is new, this is new stuff, that there's no capacity, complete news.
I mean, that's your engineer.
Well, and 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 just let me, let me also chime in on this. I think also to Demita's point, I'm I'm not exactly sure who who you were talking to at that point. But in in 2019, we assessed this property and knew that there was no sewer capacity then. That's actually when we removed marketing Wolf Creek Park from our website because of that lack of sewer infrastructure. Um, so I don't, I don't know where that, who who has left out that information or or where that has gotten lost. But I think, you know, folks are aware and maybe there there just wasn't that conversation being had with the right folks in the room. But I mean, Demita has known, known this has existed for quite some time. And like I said, when we assessed it in 2019, we determined and removed it from marketing, um, properties for for, you know, as the development authority. And so again, not sure why it wasn't expressed, but at that original meeting, which was a year before you all signed a purchase agreement, we indicated to C E C that there was not sewer capacity and offered to pay for the P E R at that period of time to show you all. And it, they never exercised that offer.
So
I'm sorry, you never exercised the offer?
B E C never, never exercised that offer that we, um, that we made to them a year before you all signed the purchase agreement. When we told them we would pay as the development authority for the P E R, the preliminary engineering report to identify that there was not capacity of sewer and water at Wolf Creek Park without a considerable upgrade. And we had commissioners and U R A members sitting in the room when that was offered to Jim Christie.
Yep. Well, that's news to us.
And it, and so these are the conversations that is is are resulting in the frustration from the U R A to further extend this project because these offers have been made to your engineering firm a year before you all ever sign this purchase agreement.
Well, and that that would be, to clarify, that would be before we got involved with with C E C.
No, we we knew you all, your name was not mentioned, but the the tourism office brought brought this project to C E C and identified what the need was going to be. And that's when we offered to pay for the P E R. So they may not have explicitly said Blue Water Development, that they did identify exactly what type of development would be done there.
Well, uh,
My Are you saying, you're saying, see, I'm sorry, you're saying you have no sewer, like your sewer capacity is absolutely limited to 100 sites. You have no more capacity beyond that number.
Correct. Without a considerable upgrade, which will take, you know, at least three years if it to upgrade and and $10 million is the the proposed estimate on that upgrade and a D E P modification of the permit, you will get 100 sites. May possibly. Um, when we assessed it in 2019 for housing, it was determined at 2019 during that assessment that it would support 85 to 100 homes, single-family homes. So that number has not changed since 2019.
So can I, so the question I have is why wasn't that disclosed by the seller, the U R A to us?
He just We were, so we were assured that you all had the 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 resources to put the the infrastructure in the ground and to 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 get there to to this, the place that you needed to be in. And so these conversations happen. We also have had these conversations with Jim Christie. Um, I was in another, I was in a meeting where this was mentioned to Jim Christie. And so that's what's frustrating for all of us is that Jim, Jim was aware of these things. And so you would think your engineer or the person that was working on this for your team um, over all these months would have identified this as an issue. And so we've communicated these things with Jim Christie. We've communicated this with C E C. Um, and so where that communication line dropped, I don't know.
That was one of the first questions I asked during our first initial meeting was about how they were going to handle the discharge and sewage from that property. So there should be notes to that effect of our meeting.
I guess the question is, it, I guess, it doesn't matter.
I think the the two questions I have here, and and again, this, I got involved when we were asked to prepare and and negotiate a purchase agreement. So I wasn't a part of the preliminary discussions or the plan. But my understanding of of the preliminary discussions were a a concept plan put before both the county commission and the U R A as a a plan to develop this property. And if if both the U R A and the the county commission knew that we were limited to 100 sites.
A concept plan designed by C E C.
I can clarify, to to the best of my knowledge and and from what Emily and Carl are telling me and saying on this on this call, C E C has never conveyed the knowledge that that this is limited to 100 sites to us. Now, that could be an oversight, that could be an intentional misrepresentation. that could be an oversight, that could be an intentional misrepresentation. We don't know. Uh, Blue Water has, has not had that, had that representation made to us, uh, until recently, it wasn't, it hadn't come up to our knowledge that the sewer was going to be an issue other than infrastructure placed on the actual property being purchased. This is in fact, not infrastructure that's being discussed on the property. This is infrastructure in the city that the infrastructure on the property would hook up to. And so from that perspective, that's a bigger issue that, that to my knowledge should have been conveyed when the concept plan in the first place was presented.
C E C has been aware of this, of this.
It was conveyed when the concept plan was presented with two U R A members in the room and a county commissioner that there was not enough sewer. This was a year before you all signed the purchase agreement. It was conveyed and we offered to pay for.
This was conveyed to Blue Water?
No, it was conveyed to more engineer.
I, I understand, and I, I made the representation. It's never been presented to us. That conveyance has only recently come up. Blue Water was not knowledge, uh, it was not aware that, that the city had capacity issues.
So C E C was not working on Blue Water's behalf at any point, at that point.
To my knowledge, the concept plan that displays C E C's name and Blue Water's logo was presented when, when the negotiations on the purchase of this property commenced and that.
This meeting was.
This, this is Michael Taylor. I'm outside counsel for the Fayette County Commission. Um, what, the county commission is not going to engage in this conversation any further about what was said, what was not said. Uh, regarding things like that, we can all go back and look at our records and, and figure this out. But from the commission standpoint, we're not going to have an argument about what was said, when was said, and things like that at this juncture. Um, things were submitted, there's documentations, there are records of the meetings. We're just not going to discuss this from the county commission's standpoint, uh, any further.
Uh, this is Corey. I would echo that, uh, on the half of the U R that I feel like these discussions should be hashed out and, and a separate, uh, separate environment and we can continue with the meeting, uh, and figure out these issues, but, um, I feel like we've gotten off the trail here a little bit.
Well, there, there is one issue that none of the lawyers have raised that I would like to bring to, uh, Corey's attention in particular, but since there's been all this talk about the title problems, it sounds like there's a pretty easy solution to me. Um, with the indemnification and as a member of the body that would do that indemnification. Um, you know, I, I get to say that. Um, but, but it does have a, a, a a statement in, on page two, it says result, um, including but not limited to the termination of the right of first refusal to the purchaser satisfaction. I would just suggest uh, that the parties further flesh that out, what the purchaser satisfaction is going to be. Is it going to be one of the two options? Um, the council for Blue Water just outlined for us. Or what is that going to be? I don't think, you know, the purchaser gets to be unli- have unlimited dissatisfaction with whatever we do. If indemnification is the answer, then let's go with indemnification or whatever. But, but my suggestion is that, um, the council work out a more specific, um, terminology for that part of the amendment.
And that's, that's a good point. And I think, uh, as part of the discussion of this amendment itself, whenever the U R A goes into executive session, we can discuss that point and finalize a, a resolution. If that's the indemnification agreement, then we can certainly put that in. If that's something else, we could also put that in. Um, but that's again, something that would, the U R A would have to make a decision on and approve, and then we can move forward from there.
Did we adjourn this meeting, go in, uh, reconvene a meeting of the U R A and, and then, uh, uh, reconvene the meeting of the whole?
Yeah. Um, well, those of us who aren't U R A can leave the room. I think that'd probably be the easiest way to, to do it.
Matt, we can, executive session and, um, go into executive session, then members of the public and those who aren't members of the U R A, U R A and, or council would, would be asked to leave during the executive session.
And so I guess would everybody have to call back in who's on?
No, I can just stop the video unmuted.
But you have U R A members on there.
Oh, right.
So you guys would just have to call your U R A members.
Jenna, I think there's, there may be a way to set up a waiting room where you can
Okay.
put certain participants in there, but, um.
Hey, Corey.
Yes.
This is Josh Charles Spillman. Um, is the U R A and/or the county commission legally permitted to indemnify private company? You might want to consider that, you know.
That's a good question. I'll have to look into that further to get a, uh, concrete answer on that.
Okay. Sounds like the meeting is adjourned. We're good to go.
Right. My understanding, are, are we going to go into a waiting room until we're, we're brought back?
Well, I think at this point, uh, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff or other members of the U R A, but the U R A would go into executive session to do final discussion points, uh, amend the proposed amendment as necessary or, and, or approve anything. Um, and then is there any, if there's no other questions or anything anyone wants to bring up with, uh, anyone on the call from Blue Water or elsewhere, um, when we go into executive session, they could log off, uh, and then after executive session, just come back out, vote on the decision and adjourn if that seems like an appropriate path forward.
Why don't we set a time for that?
I can, I can send, I can send folks to the waiting room. It looks like it might just take a second because there's so many people, but.
Or just. Corey, Corey, to your point, I, I, that seems like something that the U R A needs to handle internally and ultimately a decision is going to come back to Blue Water on a, a yea or nay or revisions. And so I, I, I don't know that there's really anything that we need to be still on the call or waiting for if I'm, if I'm not.
Well, yeah, I would say if there's any further questions, maybe we have them wait or if, if everyone's okay with what's been discussed and Blue Water could sign off, but I'll leave that to the U R A members to decide.
Steve, I feel like you had a question at one point that you didn't get to ask. Is there something you wanted to say?
Who was your, who, who was, who were you asking?
Steve, Steve, at one point you started to talk.
Steve, you're muted.
You're muted.
I'm, I'm fine.
Okay.
Well, I think with the, the U R A enters into this, uh, uh, discussion, uh, somebody asked earlier if this, uh, amendment was amendable. And I'm entering into this discussion fully assuming that it is. It's just, in, in my thinking, it's a counter offer.
I don't have any additional questions and I'm probably going to take the same approach, approach of Matt.
Yeah. Well, for the U R A's information, um, this county commissioner has shares the concerns expressed by the U R A members. Um, it feels like, you know, I feel like there are a lot of unanswered questions and a lot of things that seem to be tying this up. And I would like to see more skin in the game, um, by Blue Water to, um, allow is certainly an exorbitant amount of extensions. I mean, we're talking about two more extensions. We're going to be at almost a year since the contract was signed at that point. So, um, you know, that is, that is weighing on my mind because, um, again, you know, we've discussed the reasons we have to believe that Blue Water uh, should be farther along on some of these issues than it is. So, um, my two cents. And I'm going to leave the room. So the U R A can have its executive session for the reason no one has yet stated. If somebody would make that clear for the record, why you're going to executive session, uh, that would be great.
But Jeff, on behalf of the U R A, I'd like to ask that the U R A enter into an executive session uh, to discuss the matter of the, um, renewal and the renewal fees, uh, as pertains to the Blue Water extension.
All right, there's a second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing, not all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, hold on one second, y'all. I'm going to, anybody who's hanging out, I'm just going to send you to the waiting room. So one sec.
Jeff, I'm going to excuse myself for two minutes. I got to run to the restroom where I'm not going to make it much longer.
I understand. Oh, man, I've set just about our damn date.
Can I ask a question before I get into the waiting room here? This is Erica Bogus. Can you hear?
Erica, yep.
So you guys are going to go into executive session, come back out and vote. Do you need the housing fund back? Or should we just plan on waiting to see what you all decide tomorrow?
I don't, I don't feel it. I mean.
Erica, I can, I can email you with whatever conclusion that U R A comes to right after they adjourn and just, I'll let you know tonight what the final decision was.
Okay. All, all right. Um, do you all have any questions for me then, before we jump off?
Hey, I do. I do too. Erica, this is Michael Taylor from, on behalf of the Fayette County Commission. Does the housing fund have any, uh, any position on, uh, whether this should be, uh, extension should be granted or not?
I can, you know, we're a co-lender in this. Um, we share a first lien with the infrastructure council. So I want to be careful here not to speak on their behalf. Okay. Um, but I guess from our position, we've come a long way down this path. I don't think we would be opposed to the extension as far as the time goes, and that's just from the lender perspective. And again, I can't commit to that on the state's behalf, but that's just my thoughts off the top of my head here.
Well, can, can I, can I ask you something, man?
Sure.
If, if the extension is granted and, and the U R A agrees to the extension under Blue Water's terms, or they come up with their own terms and then, and then it's extended. If they don't purchase it, where, where does that put this situation?
I think I need to ponder that a bit. Um, you, you know, I think the note.
Before we go on, we should probably allow the folks in the hallway to come back in for a minute if we're not actually in executive session.
Yep, we're back in.
Th- this may be a discussion for later unless the U R A would like clarity before any sort of vote occurs, but.
Are, are we in executive session, executive, executive session and Erica is joining us? Is that what's happening?
No, I don't think the motion has been passed yet to go in. It's been first and seconded, but no.
It was, it was passed and I don't think Erica could, I'm, I'm going to speak for Erica. I don't think that she at this moment could answer that question. That's a, that's a huge question that I'm sure she would have to collaborate with the other lenders and, and, uh, and, and other folks in the state department.
Yes, yes, I, I would clearly. I can't answer that here.
Uh, let's move into executive session.
Okay. The housing fund is going to just jump off and Corey will wait to get an update from you later. Okay, thank you all. Bye bye.
Hold on.
Um, Jeff, we still got some folks on the call that, uh, not supposed to.
She's getting rid of them, Matt. She, it takes a while to get, get rid of them.
Take me out, Jenna.
Okay, wait, I don't even see you. Oh, there you are.
Over here.
Me, me too. I'm, I need kicked out as well.
Thank you. Okay, so we've got Steve. Oh wait. I kicked out Corey instead of Michael, I think.
I'm, I'm still here, I think.
Oh, Matt Winder.
Yeah, actually, I'll tell, I'll make it easy on you.
Okay, Corey, Jeff, Matt, Steve, that should be it, right?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry.
No, it's all right. Uh, Matt, second the motion. Is there any further discussion?
I'd just like to be on the record to say that I think it should be a greater amount, but, uh, I, I, I think that the votes are there for the $10,000.
All right.
So for recording purposes, I'll just go ahead and say what you just said. Jeff, you said you're recommending, you made a motion to, uh, offer them the opportunity to extend two additional times at $10,000, non-refundable each time. For 60 days.
Yeah, correct. Basically to accept the, the proposal that was, or the, uh, the, uh, amendment that was mailed around uh, and changing the 5,000 to 10, 10,000.
Okay, I do have a question before we vote. Um, did you guys discuss and resolve the issue about satisfying the right of first refusal to the purchaser satisfaction? Cause that's really nebulous.
Um, we, we did not spend a whole lot, or any time really on that. Uh, I think Corey has a plan, Allison, uh, of which maybe, you know, at a separate conversation, we could share that with you.
That's not part of the extension.
Right, so it's, yeah, it's, it's in the, um, amendment. Oh, the language is in the amendment. That's why.
The, the attorney for Blue Water specified that in, in his, uh, draft amendment, but it was the reading of the purchase agreement, it would be in there anyway because the U R A is obligated to convey a good marketable title. Um, and the title company working on it is said that that rofer is an exception to title. So that would be include, that rofer exception would be included in, uh, the original P S A, he just put it in there to spell it out.
Well, that didn't look to the purchaser satisfaction. Like that part, that part is, that terminology left a lot of room for them to say, no, you are, you have to litigate it. Like if you were to go with his two examples, you know, versus litigation versus indemnification agreement, you know, they could change what their satisfaction is. That's, that can be a moving target is my point.
And that, if, if the U R A is, uh, as part of their motion, they, I mean, you, you are a members, you all could strike that, that, those words as part of your amendment to the proposal. Just the, the specific words to the purchaser satisfaction, if you want to strike those, that could be part of your approved.
I, I will accept an amendment to my motion.
I'll accept it as a second to that motion.
Thank you, U R A. I'll sleep better.
All right, hearing, uh, um, no further discussions, uh, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. All right. I'm not sure that I have an appetite for anything else on the, if there is anything else on the agenda. There's a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are we, are we, are we leaving this to Corey to relay the, uh, outcome of our, uh, session?
Yes.
Yes, I'll, I'll take care of that, man. I'll communicate with Blue Water's council and with the state, uh, let them know what you all have decided.
Thank you, Lori.
Just to be clear, we have a motion to adjourn the county commission meeting and I second that.